And so I am turning on my mic on and I'll get the signal from Adam when we're thumbs up. Okay, so we are recording March 14th meeting of the ZBA. The agenda has, the first thing on is election of officers. Do you guys want to do that first? Okay, so I'm going to announce who's here. We've got Kyle Bates, who's now a full elected member of the board, was an alternate before tonight, or before Tuesday. Megan Kelly's vice chair, I'm Peter Coffin, current chair, Rick Russman, member, and Shaw Tilton, member. And we've all been sworn in, ones who were on the ballot, so we're all legal and ready to go. The first thing I'll order business for us is to elect officers, and I will take a motion from the floor.
Yeah, I will move that Megan Kelly be chair of the ZBA.
Okay, and I'll second that.
Yeah.
And we need to get an affirmation that we're willing to accept. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous for, I gotta write the don'ts down because our administrative assistant's not here, the administrator's not here tonight, and she's gonna be doing the minutes from the recording, so Megan, and so for vice chair.
I would like to make a motion that Peter Coffin be vice chair.
If you need your mic on.
Oh, sorry, microphone. I would like to make a motion to have Peter Coffin be vice chair of the ZBA.
I'll second that. And that was a motion by Megan, seconded by Shaw. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. So, vice chair. That was quick. The second item on the agenda is the meeting minutes for February 8th. They were very brief, because the meeting was very brief. We continued to hearing that's on tonight to February 8th. Any motion from the floor as to acceptance of minutes?
Move to accept.
Second.
Second, okay, that's Rick made the motion, and Megan seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I, that's, was that unanimous? I think yes.
It was unanimous.
Okay, B-U-N-A. All right, so I'd like to move right into the public hearing. I don't know if you heard Adam's announcement about the microphones. It's especially important tonight that we do this properly, because as I said, the recording secretary is going to be taking them off of the YouTube video. So when you, when you get up to speak, there's a green light, you'll have it, it'll be red, turn it to green, and just leave it right in front of you. Speak fairly loudly and clearly, but not right down at the mic, because it over-modulates, it tends to cut out when it's too much volume there, so. And if you're shuffling papers, try to do it away from the microphone. All right, so the first public hearing tonight, yes.
Oh.
I'm sorry. We just did this, and I'm going to pass over, I'm going to take the attendance, because I did that. Peter, Megan, Rick, Shaw, Kyle, not Mike and not Ben, and Robin Cutter's absent, so, and no others other than the applicants and the general public.
All right.
So, having said that, and having done the minutes, which I should have given to you to do.
That's all right. We should have set this up.
Trying to get everything going too fast. So I will, that's your book, because I-
No, that's your book. I took my book. Oh, is that my book now?
Well, I mean, it's, I think the one that's laid out.
Is it my official?
Yeah.
Okay.
So any recording you're going to do should, I think so. And you got your microphones? No, I got your microphone. I'm going to put yours on. Turn that off.
Sorry, the first meeting of the month after the election's always fun, guys. All right.
All right.
Yep.
And stuff I brought with me.
Over there. Okay. There I did. There it is. All right. The first hearing, we have one hearing tonight for Liberty Commons. It is continued from the February 8th meeting. We are going to hear about two variances that they requested. One is under Article 108(c)(1), Section 7(c)(9) for building height, and the other is 108-13 structure regulations. Would you like to come up and give your presentation?
Anyone mention this was-
The region, okay. All right. So before you get started, just for the record, we had continued from the last meeting upon request, but also because we determined regional impact at the February 8th meeting, so here we are tonight. You're good to go.
Good evening, folks. My name is Keith Martel. I'm here on behalf of Liberty Commons as the applicant. I have with me a few people tonight. I have Michael Kim from MK Architects. He helped us with some of the overall design themes, elevations, and design intent of the project. I have with me my daughter Anna. She's been helping us. She's done a performance that really got the project rolling with us, and been with us each step of the way. I thought it was funny to put her in a short chair, too. And I have with me attorney Patricia Pantiello in the audience. She helped me with the overall application coming in, can help us with the criteria at the end. So if it's okay with you guys, I figured that I'd go through and I'd kind of give you a little background and overall acclimate you with where we are, what we've done so far, where the project is. And then I was going to ask Michael to give us an overall on what he was trying to articulate through some of his designs, the theme for the community, and why the variances themselves were important to us going through. For, kind of what I wasn't planning on doing, but certainly can jump into if you guys would like, is that I did receive, thank you very much for covering last meeting and determining regional impact, you did not want me here, I promise. We appreciated the feedback that we got from both, I think it was East Kingston, as well as the Regional Planning Commission going through. Most of the things, actually all of the things, I think that I read through as I perused through their letters were very planning-driven. There were, you know, wetlands, wildlife, traffic, wells, things like that, that are very important to us, but they weren't necessarily relevant to the application that we had before you guys tonight. So I'm going to gloss over those parts in my presentation, but I'm glad that I address any of them if specific questions are coming up, or if you'd like me to do otherwise, I am. So we're here tonight for a parcel of property that, my understanding, has actually been in front of some of the town board several times before. There's a total of four tax maps. Can you go up there and start pointing out some tax maps for me? There's a total of four tax maps that comprise the area that the project is being developed in. They're in a C1 zone. They, you have a point. Yep, so we have three of them that border on 125, and those are accessed through a limited right-of-way that was plotted by DOT and the town of Kingston a number of years ago. Rumor mill and background, sounds like that's a little bit of a can of worms going through that area of it, and we elected to instead stay away from that area for the time being as a means of predominant access. That area doesn't allow us to access directly onto 125. They plotted the right-of-way coming down very, in a very difficult spot for the intersection down at the bottom, not that it couldn't be done, but wasn't necessarily the best alternative. So in addition to the three parcels she just pointed to, we also acquired a lower parcel that fronts on Depot Road, and have our predominant access to the project coming through there. The area itself is bordered really entirely by residential to the, what would be the right-hand side, and I don't see my, probably the easternly side of the property, as well as on the front edge of Depot Road, as well as to the back, you can see the transition line from the C1 to the RR zone going through there. So in tasking Michael with coming up with the theme for the project, we were sensitive to the idea that we were really transitioning in a commercial zone, but directly abutting single-family residential, not multifamily, not anything of that nature. I shared with the planning board back some time ago, we had dinner at the, I called it the 1680 House, but I think it's a 1686 House, I've since learned. And both my wife and I were just really taken by the center green that you guys have in town. We thought it was an awesome attribute to the town of Kingston going through. And since then, we've often talked about those center greens as we developed other projects, but never had an opportunity to do one. And when we came across this project, ironically, it happened to be in the same town that kind of stoked that thought for us. And we asked Michael to create a project that was centered around the community green, centered around a sense of community with it, and bring in some of the more nostalgic colonial-era design that we, it's very common in the town of Kingston and many of the surrounding towns in New England. And it's in that that the variances became important to us. We're asking for two variances from you guys tonight. One of them is for the height of a structure, and I don't want to steal Michael's thunder, but I'll tell you that that structure that he designed is a structure that's designed to look more like a community meeting house. You guys have a very similar one down the street, I think it's a church, but you see them, the stately white buildings with the taller bell or steeple going onto the top of it. The way that your ordinance is written, it has just a general overall height for those structures, and that height differs, not to add complication to it, but the height differs, one, in the zone, and then it changes again when we go into conditional use permit, which is the planning board, conditional use permit to get into the multifamily aspect of it. And I believe that they actually bring it down when they go to the multifamily, which makes sense, their concern is people living there. We have met with the fire department, certainly that was our first step in order to get a feeling and a gauge on what their thoughts were with this. And the building, as we have designed with a flat roof, would comply with your ordinance. Their concern is getting people out of the top-floor windows with the current apparatus, if they have length breach, things like that, so that they can safely remove somebody, and heaven forbid there was a fire on it. Their intent behind that was not to necessarily hamper good design and aesthetic, the pitch of the roof, or the bell tower that we had on the top of it. So in our application, you do have a letter from fire, I don't want to call it support, but suggesting that we meet their intent with limiting the capacity of the building to just the ceiling of that top floor where any residents could potentially occupy. And we did provide that for you guys. The second variance that we asked for was a little bit of a trick one. Building codes in New Hampshire have a different set of codes when you go more than two units. So they share a definition of multifamily being more than two, but in our logic, two and one parcel of land with, you know, any number of units constituted multifamily from us. So I had to ask Michael to design stately colonials, something that was going to fit in in a country-type town, and looked appropriate facing onto the center green. The duplex became important to us, because the alternative which does conform to you would be either big apartment buildings, or row housing, you know, I say army barracks sort of, but that very regular, those conform to the ordinance. We wanted to do something a little bit better than that, candidly, and that look is very difficult to achieve when you, when you have that number of doors, that number of smaller units going into it. And I'm going to save some of that presentation for him, and then I'm going to come back and I'm going to answer any questions that you guys have, and share a little bit more with you. And you want to take that work out, Michael? I just wanted to show them where we were. Green is recorded?
Okay.
Here, actually, do we have this site?
Yeah.
Here, okay.
I meant to have you enough look at this area.
So from the site boundaries.
You can't see.
We have-
Can I hold you up one moment? Can we just angle things a little bit more so that one of our members-
I was hoping to get both the audience-
I know.
And the important audience, but-
Just back it up.
I mean, even just backing it up with the, ooh.
Is that in the?
That's your room.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. How's that go?
So, the overall, the overall site plan, this shows the entry from Depot Road, some access roadways on which we have several of these smaller buildings, the duplexes, a variation of duplexes that are proposed. But the center and heart of the, of the design is the New England Common, is Liberty Common. And we're proposing a central green space flanked by the smaller buildings, but anchored and terminated by a larger building and two smaller walk-ups. And that forms the heart of the development. We then have some backroads to fill the rest of the site. So that is the, that is the basic site plan. The idea behind it is no secret. We're trying to do a quintessential New England space, one we feel that takes from the existing planning, site planning and architecture of southern New Hampshire and the rest of New England. So we started with a deep dive into the typology of the New England green. We found there is a great consistency of scale, of edge treatment, of landscape, usually a monument, or gazebo, bandstand, or some sort of feature, and a way to slow down traffic. You enter the common area, you know where you are. And this makes sense, because it's a very recognizable urban space, or urban space in a country environment. It's also worth noting, it happens almost nowhere else in the U.S. This is strictly a New England phenomenon, and that's why it just seems to want to be here, in our opinion. The flanking of the space is extremely important. Then we started with the design of the three basic buildings, the building blocks we're working on. The first is the duplex, which we've kind of cleverly disguised as a stately colonial house. It's a traditional building that is part of what defines the central concept of the New England Common, the green. In this case, we are making the main entries in the side wings, thereby concealing the fact that it's a duplex. So we have an overall massing of a stately house, which is what's needed really to bring the sides of the, to define the sides of the common. This also will be the houses that spread around, around the rest of the development. With, there'll be some variants with attached garages and so forth. We're also proposing an alley entrance to the garage, so that the common, the face to the common isn't flanked with a bunch of garages. So everything's trying to work together toward that main concept. Building B, everything's on Zoom these days.
I know, right?
But it's nice to do this old school, with a few hiccups. Building B is the walk-up. It's a larger version, or the stepped-up version from the base duplex. It also allows for some smaller apartments, so we get a range of accessibility and affordability, and we can appeal to a greater part of the population. So we bring in a lot of the same materials and treatments, certainly the multi-pane windows that are expected in a New England common, but we've stretched it out a little. This is a two-and-a-half-story building, divided up into a number of units, in this case, this is, sorry, this was 10 units. Two in each floor, sorry, four on each floor, then two in the attic. No elevator. And then, finally, we have the center, the center building. Critically, in a New England common, you have at least one larger structure which anchors the green space. And often, it's a church, or a town hall, or communal space. We don't have that in our program, so we've designed a residential building of that scale. So what we have is a three-story building with a pitch roof, as Keith said. Yeah, we could conform if it's a flat-roofed building, but that just doesn't feel right in a New England common. A feature such as the cupola, which is not counted in the height. And this is an elevator building, so it's fully accessible. And in both the midsize building and this terminal building, we're putting the parking to the back. So again, like, we're not putting the garages facing the common, the parking lots are also to the rear. So it's the buildings themselves that define the common space. Going really old school, we're working with the materials, again, the multi-pane windows. We're trying to break this down to a traditional scale, both on a macro level and on the micro level. It's obviously still a work in progress, but that's the intent of what we're trying to do in the design. So it's a big, it's a big site. There are, there are a large number of units proposed, so we want to give this some coherence by using the concept of the common. And, you know, we're asking for a larger building to reinforce that concept. So we're trying to make all the pieces work together, so that the whole is greater than the sum of the parts, but to do that, each part, each type of building, needs to work toward that central concept, which is why we're here tonight. So with more views from across the common and in the corner toward the end. So that is respectfully what we're doing, trying to do a single concept where everything reinforces that, to feel is the appropriate and familiar atmosphere to add to the community here. Have any questions?
Thank you. So at this time, we'll open it up to the board to see if they have any questions for the applicant, the applicant, sorry.
I do have a question.
You do have, okay.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Go, you, go ahead and finish.
I didn't share a little bit with you about where this building is situated. So for clarity, the first building that Michael showed you was the duplex-style unit. That's one that's a target of our variance application. The second building that Michael showed you, which is flanking the one with the bell tower on the center of it, conforms to your ordinance, so there is no need for relief sought on that building itself. The building that's the subject of the height one is the one with the bell tower that you have going on. And the location of that one is very internal to the project itself. So when, when I spoke earlier, I spoke a little bit about the transition and the types of uses and things like that that we had around us. It was ironic, as we were putting the application together, we were going through some of the, some of the feedback that we had heard from the community. Facebook makes it a very public forum, so we can get a feel for what people are thinking, what people's objections might be, what some of their feelings are. And the ordinance itself also helped us out. So when we went through the ordinance, we found that we could put up, you know, a large warehousing-type building. It really wouldn't be appropriate for the site itself. The site itself is a little bit unique, because of, I touched on it earlier, and now I'm speaking more to the individual points of the variance going through, and why I thought that it was still a responsible decision to come here. This parcel, though it's zoned in a way that permits those commercial uses, that would be those larger square, scaled buildings, it doesn't really fit with the abutting residential use, is also hampered because of that access. Those types of buildings and those types of uses generally would like to enjoy front inch directly onto 125, and that's not possible to do here. So, you know, we need to use those unique words when we're with the zoning board, the uniqueness of the site is a little bit individual, in that it's abutting just straight single families on every side that I have. And its uses as currently zoned, being commercial, the more traditional commercial-type uses maybe aren't fitting here, and the market, the Realtor is with us today, could share that the market was also suggesting that same thing. It can't handle that type of use coming into it. So Michael was pointing before I just started talking a little bit more note about the taller building. The taller building is really internal to the site itself. I could scale it off going into there, but I don't think, you know, slightly offset to the right by the wetland in the back, we're hundreds and hundreds of feet away from any other structure. So it's not that we're asking for relief for a building that would be situated next to directly a single-family house going into it. So we thought that it was an appropriate ask coming through. We didn't believe that that created any negative impact going through. Similarly, the duplex request, we felt to be the same. It's a better transition from that single-family zone to the abutting uses that we have on the other sides, keeping more in harmony with the single-family use of it. We backed ourselves into a little bit of a corner when we read some of the Facebook posts coming in. People were vocal that they were concerned about taxes, and they were concerned about large-scale apartment buildings going in there. Taxes, we can deal with clearly at the planning side, we do a fiscal impact study going along with it, we can address that. The other criteria that we have going in is that those larger buildings are diffused by the request for a duplex, and we lose any of the overall intent or our ability to smooth that transition as we go to larger buildings or row houses. So it gets a little bit challenging for us when we take that aspect away from it, and that's really why we're here today.
Sorry, could you repeat the last thing that you just said, please?
I was speaking to the uniqueness of the site, and where I backed myself into a little bit of a corner. Some of the Facebook posts, there was, and to clarify, this is a for-sale condominium project. In the noticing, the engineer used the word apartment, and apartment people believe to be a rental house. That is not the intention for the project going into it. We felt that the duplexes better serve, after seeing the feedback of residents and feedback of the town, better serve as a smoother transition between the uses permitted in the commercial one zone and the single-family houses that we have all around us. We're not surrounded by other multifamily properties that have, you know, eight of them in a building, though that conforms to your ordinance, and I wouldn't necessarily have to be here for them. We're not here because, generally with any project, we would task our engineers, any of our architects, to design something that fits with your regulations. There's times when your regulations, and I think this may be one of them, are designed for uses that are more commercial in nature, and assume that the land that they're being applied to enjoy the access, enjoy the parts that would make them commercial. So we backed ourselves into a corner, because we need to transition to those single-family houses without having an uproar of it, and we didn't think a giant mass apartment building would do that. Did that answer?
Yes. Thank you.
I might add one thing, as a fellow regulatory board member in another state, you're right, you're right about your regulations, except your regulations also provide for this board, which is why we're here.
Right, I think I'm going to follow up on Shaw's question about the transition, because that's what struck me in your, in your written arguments, was that it seems to me that currently you have four large buildings with multi-appartments, and maybe one window per each, because you made the argument that-
And two.
And two.
Yeah. And the others are duplexes, whereas you could have, say, a triplex or a quadruplex, which I think would be a smoother transition between, right now, I think it's sort of a haves and haves-nots. You know, you, you got the duplexes, which are really sort of like a single-family residential, you know, and, I mean, that's why they're permitted in the rural residential, the single-family or duplex. But, so as far as scale, you have the small, the duplex, and the very large, the 24 and the 18
Medium, yep.
Or 10 units.
I'm following your logic.
You know, units. So I see a better continuity on-site of being a small multi-unit, like a triplex, and the large apartment buildings. And I know you, that duplexes are preferred to have a higher profit margin and, and things like that, because, as you said, they have more light coming in, like a single-family house does. But compare that to the smaller units, the, the units in the 24 block building, or the, is it 18, I think?
Eighteen.
Eight, 24 is our max, right? So 18, it was under the max. You know, those, those only have the one, one outward-facing window, so I would, especially on the north side, that they'd think they would be a little dark. But, so I'm, I'm thinking that that really, to me, doesn't really make a good argument. I can see now what you're talking about was the transition between the single-family houses around the project and the duplexes, and then on the interior, the
Correct.
Four larger buildings.
It was the surrounding area.
Yeah, so, but, you know, I, I would be interested in seeing what a triplex would look like, you know, with a sort of a traditional, the center being the sort of traditional house, and then the, the smaller, the outskirts being the two other units. And I, I don't think that it would really change that much as far as, you know.
It would when we started sketching into it. So that if you look at the width of each of the individual units going into it, and then you insert another unit into the center, the width and the mass of those buildings prohibits the look of the traditional colonial sitting around a common. It starts going into more of a multifamily. And that's, that's kind of specifically what the abutting feedback was, was against, or the community feedback was, those bigger buildings. So it's more an address to that extent.
If, if I could, with all respect, the presentation showed three buildings, the duplexes, the walk-ups, which are 10-unit buildings. Those are designed to be that transition. And there were actually three of those, so there, there are more, there's twice as many walk-up units in the middle-sized building. And then the single-large building, which is there as a architecture and site planning move to anchor a green space of that scale. So we have more of that, that, the transition that, that you were referring to as far as number of units in the three walk-up buildings, the 10-unit buildings.
And then The picture you showed of the sort of traditional ones that have the old photographs or the old etchings, whatever, did show a common with larger buildings around it.
Yes.
And, you know, they were probably government buildings and churches and things like that, but, yeah, I, I don't think it, it's prohibitive to, to go from duplex to triplex. I don't think that, yeah, go ahead.
If I have one more point, just in building typology, the, the three-unit building, especially in, in New England, first of all, the most common type is obviously the triple-decker, found in New England cities and almost nowhere, nowhere else, and certainly not found in southern New Hampshire. So we threw that one out immediately.
Yes.
Then, then the other classic typology would be the town, the townhouses, one, two, three, on, on their side, and you can just add them like slices of bread. Again, maybe Portsmouth, maybe Concord, certainly Worcester and, and some Providence and some of the old cities. In a country environment, we found that that's, that's a difficult typology to work with, and it's not one found near, near, traditionally near a New England common. Now, could, we have some very talented people working, could we conceal that and make that try to look right and so forth? Maybe, but it'd be asking my, my very talented designers to try to bend over backwards to do it, whereas this is a natural. And, you know, I'd say
We explored the rationale behind the duplex being omitted from it. And the, the understanding that we had from planning was that it was a function of building code, that they followed the definitions based off of the building code. When you go to larger buildings, you, you trip into sprinklers, different types of fire separation, things like that. So they did not believe it to be an intense, specific thing. They believed it to be a, a, just an emulation of what building code is for what that's worth.
Are you suggesting that the design here is based on what you read on Facebook?
No, I'm suggesting that some of the feedback that we got gave from there.
Okay, but that's not what this is designed to, to take care of.
Facebook did not design.
And I think we have another year or so till AI kicks over, so.
Are, are we open for questions?
Yes.
Yeah. So, so just some basic questions. So why not just, so you need the, the variance. So maybe you could explain a little bit how your understanding about the 35 and the 45-foot difference, right, under a commercial slightly? And then, so that would be question number one. And then, two, why not just drop the building down and match it to the others? I understand the aesthetics, but I'd like to hear your argument about it.
I'm gonna let you handle dropping the building down, and I'm gonna talk about the town. Yep, yes. So as, within the commercial zone, multifamily requires a conditional use permit. And one of the triggers under that commercial, under that conditional use permit, and I apologize, I didn't bring glasses with me, changes the height of the building from 45 feet to 35 feet. So buildings could be at 45, they reduce it to 35, because somebody's gonna put an apartment, a living area, right at the tippity top of that building. If we were to look to the cross-sections, I'm sure, can you just spin that one right back up? The cross-sections of it and fire's concern were limiting it there. So it's the fire apparatus that they're trying to achieve, that they can get a ladder up to the window. Am I answering your question there? And did that answer your question about the, I'm only doing the regulation side, but he's doing the
Go there, yeah.
And actually, further to that, if we just took the building, obviously, this is still a sketch. And we did, obviously, the first thing we try is something that conforms. So if you get something that's, that reaches just the 35 feet at a scale that's appropriate to the site plan, the first reaction we had, this is a motel six. Not that there's anything wrong with a motel six, but appropriate for a commercial space next to a highway and so forth. It's just, it did, it doesn't reinforce the, the whole concept of a, a common. Yes, we can do motel sixes, but be a shame.
Yeah, no, I do appreciate what you're trying to do in achieving the look and looking at that. I guess the piece is, so you're asking for the two variances, but then there's also this issue of multi, you're saying multiplex, but multifamily, which we have specific designation in New Hampshire state law and also within our code, that is, a multifamily is, is three or more, it's not two or more. And, and so that's a big piece for us to get over here, right, that you're asking for. And it specifically states within the commercial one zone that it can only be multifamily, right? You can't just have single-family homes, right? So, so we're, I'm appreciating on one hand that you're trying to match into the neighborhood and also a commercial one says it can't be that anyway. It has to be more than. So I guess, is there a question there? Yeah, the question is how to, how, you're asking for a variance where there, there is specific state law and it specifically doesn't
It's building code.
Okay.
And it just triggers different ways of treating fire within the building, doing different things like that.
Sure.
It's not a state law.
What's RSA, right? There's RSA, we'll have to look at it, that specifically states what that is, so, give me a second.
Yeah, hang on a sec, we have that here. RSA 67443.
Right.
For non-residential, yes, multifamily dwelling units common, which are defined as any structures containing more than two dwelling units, whether or not such development includes a subdivision, re-subdivision, whatever. So that was, that's, that's the RSA that you were looking at.
Right, thank you. I have a couple of things. So I guess, just to finish it off, I'm just wanting to be able to be able to make an argument, right? If that's what you're asking for, knowing that there's an RSA that we're gonna have to look at, knowing that our, we have these specific laws, how are we gonna make that argument? That's
I think that the variance criteria, in a way, speak to that, in that they talk about the intent of the argument of ordinances. And most often, intent of an ordinance in some, in a case like this, is to promote harmony with the site within the neighborhoods that it's, it's being situated in going into it. We certainly could do what my friend Michael would consider going a bad job and have flat group buildings. We all could also have five, 24-unit, two-story buildings going into there. And I would probably overfill this room with the butters coming in, unhappy with us sticking to the ordinance itself. So the intent of the ordinance, and the reason why this process is, is here, is to give the town a flexibility that when, when something could be done better, when there's a rationale behind it, this isn't one that we're asking for more density. You know, you're permitted for 100, I'd love 200. It's not a case like that. It's a way that we perceive that we're making the project a better fit for within the community, simply stated. And we, after visiting fire, after visiting planning, didn't see any areas where we would contradict the ordinance for it, where we would be against any intent for it. And, and that's why we're here asking. It's your town, we're guests here. But we believe that we can do the project better than what this was written for that didn't really think of a project.
Appreciate that.
So, but you, you would agree with, you're not, that it would be fair to say that you're asking us to not just disregard the, the ordinance that we have, but to negate it?
I'm sorry.
You're asking us not just to disregard the ordinance, saying that multi is three, or more than two, you're asking to negate that and not, not use that, right? I mean, isn't that what you're asking?
The variance is because we're asking to not meet it as written, that's correct.
Right. And, and so, and you, you talk about you, your perception is that this would look better and be in harmony, and that's kind of just, that is just a matter of opinion, really, right?
I share, I share your understanding.
so the town, the town not that long ago voted to, to make multifamily be more than two, and this is a multifamily-owned area, right?
I'm sorry.
It's a multifamily-zoned area, which means more than
There's a permitted use in that area, correct? Under a conditional use permit.
Right, I think that, again, not to, it's, the struggle is that it says not, it's not a residential, we cannot put single-family homes in that area.
Though I think important, the compromise between three and one is two, there are no single families proposed. And
Or five and one, or 24 and two.
True. And, and I don't think we're asking to negate the, the zoning as written. We're, we're asking to adhere to the intent, which in this case is not being as well-served, in our opinion, by the letter of the law, but is better served by the interpretation, which you are empowered to do.
I have a question, it might, it's probably more for other members of the board to potentially answer than, than you guys, but, so, but if you have any comments, please chime in. So I'm just trying to wrap my head around a couple of things. Math, math was done to figure out how many bedrooms were allotted, were allowed to be allotted in this particular piece of property, correct? 255? So
The, the density is based on bedrooms.
The density is based on
And that was
Correct.
The intensity logic was, was increased not that many years ago, or a few years ago, from, in fact, your predecessor project came in and couldn't build because we had too low a density requirement, and the planning board specifically changed that.
I can't.
Yeah, well, I can't. But, but we changed because, in order to comply with the state's request for workforce housing with a small W, because we, this doesn't comply with workforce housing with a capital W. The, well, if it did, you'd have to have minimum five units, state workforce, state ordinance on work, on state law, workforce housing with a capital W is that minimum number of dwelling units per building is five.
Okay.
So, yeah. And so the, this ordinance was put in this town, there was an intent to comply with the state request for workforce housing. And that's why they decided on the, on the three, because that was the state definition of multifamily, and, and they felt multifamily was. So there was this distinct attempt to say, okay, we can allow, we allow duplexes and single families in, in rural residential, which is what you brought to the north. But the, most of the town is that, and that's not, that's not what the intent of this ordinance was. When they created it, it was to comply with the state's request for workforce housing. And, and so we know what the intent, when they wrote that, was. And it was to provide more housing, which is a, a big deal in the state right now, so.
Again, we're, we're a guest in your town.
See if you follow me on this, though. I'm just trying to like, kind of come up on the other side of, of the, what we've been discussing. So if the max number of bedrooms allowed is 255, and some of Glenn, one of Glenn's comments was that the town's ordinance requires greater density in the zone in order to address the accepted need for increased housing stock, the number of bedrooms allowed is not going to change based on the size of the property, correct?
Right, that's correct. So you, you know, three, three duplexes
One bedrooms, or it could be
Right, so I guess what I'm
If there were three
I guess what I'm kind of coming at is, there, it's either bigger buildings with more bedrooms in them or smaller buildings with less bedrooms in them to make that happen, correct? No matter what, there's not gonna be a higher density than what is already being proposed.
Yes, yes, can't
Correct, sorry.
True statement. So there's, there's, there's any configuration of, of those bedrooms on the site that's permitted in your ordinance. So it could be 256 one-bedrooms, it could be 128 two-bedrooms, it could be, I'm not that good at math, that's not in my head, but I think you get the intent. These are designed as a mix of one and two-bedroom units. We cap out at two bedrooms, one and eighteen, which is
And is that in the duplexes as well as the apartment?
Correct.
Correct.
And it's proposed for 255 bedrooms.
You're correct. The difference that we're asking is whether they share a lot or not. It's not that the site gets more or less either way.
Right. But I guess, on that side of it, that does come down to is what they've tried to do with it being a small town. Yeah, so I guess that's where, it can either be a lot of bigger buildings with the same number of bedrooms, or it can have a different look and style that, in their opinion, has fit, you know, more with our town. So that, just kind of throwing that out there.
So you're just sort of saying, okay, they could make it all multifamily, it, it could have a different configuration.
Right.
Right.
But the density is going to remain the same.
Right, yeah.
And the site is a single site. So the structures may be a duplex, but we're not doing standalone duplexes on a slightly bigger house lot in a residential. The site is a single-ownership condominium site. So from an overall standpoint, it's a 256-bedroom site. So in our head, that, that stays consistent. So in our head, that, that stays consistent with the multifamily. We're honestly here just trying to do better than what adhering to the literal interpretation of it seems to point towards.
Yeah, which I am tracking, and I do think is coming across, and appreciative, right? Because we have, we can just drive a couple towns down and see how it's not that way, so...
Does the board have any more questions? Because I feel like we probably have some public comment...
Well, yeah, I, I did have one comment, because we are talking the two...
You only talked about one?
Variances at times. And I, I can give you some background on the, the only set of minutes I found from the planning board that talked about any of this was when they were discussing in making this article the height, and having to be Rich St. Olair, who's one of, who's also one of the fire chiefs, he was on the planning board, and he said, he didn't, you know, when they, they talked about forty-five-foot height originally, he said, well, I didn't think the fire department would buy off on that, so he suggested thirty-five feet. Thirty-five feet isn't a random number. In the state model for, in fact, their default zoning ordinance that towns can adopt, it says thirty-five feet for the maximum height for residents. And however, they also take the height of the roof as being from the peak to the eve and dividing it, so that it's, it's a little different computation. In our ordinance, it says to the peak of the roof. But that's where that thirty-five foot came from for residents, and the fact that the top floor of the attic, as it were, underneath that peak roof is non-residential, I think is a significant difference, is a significant thing to make, and that could be part, if they, or just go in with a variance, it would probably be conditioned, based on the fire department letter of approval, is that there's no residences above.
And to be clear, that information, when I'm saying those numbers, that's, that's from our meeting with the fire chief, so that was the source of plan.
Right, yeah.
Just want to clarify that I wasn't looking into...
Yeah, I, I do, just from a personal standpoint, I dislike seeing variances that use the term plus or minus. We have one, that is another one that's coming back to us, that's got plus or minus, and it's plus or minus what? Plus or minus ten feet, you know, it's like, I think it would be a maximum number that you'd be...
Correct, and we would have no problem with that. Part of that was a scramble in putting the application together between Attorney Nancy Oka and myself, and not having Michael with us. We have Michael with us, so, so limiting to a finite number is perfectly achievable.
Excellent.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
What is the, what's going to be in, above the thirty-five feet?
Structure.
What?
Structure and...
Storage, in that attic area, storage, right?
Within, limited storage, mechanical, but primarily structure.
Okay.
Process, yeah.
If we open it up, do we have the opportunity to ask more questions?
Yeah, okay. No, I, no, that's a good question. I appreciate any comment from Peter, because I've run some meetings before, but not many, so, I guess it's appreciated. So at this time, we will open it up to public comment. If you would like to speak on either of these variances specifically that apply to this application, there's a microphone at the end of the table over here with a chair. Please give your name and your address, and have at it.
Don't be shy.
Okay. Before they, yeah.
Hi, my name's Edward Whitton, and we're fifty-six depot road, which is the east side of the park.
Oh, oh, hold on one sec. He can't hear you. Here, if you flip, turn it, turn it around so that, there we go. That's probably going to be better.
Got it. Is that a little better?
Okay.
Edward Whitton, at fifty-six depot road, at the adjacent property to the east of this property, goes back probably a few thousand feet, I'd say a couple thousand at least, on that property line. Personally, we see that nine-and-a-half acre parcel now, which will be your entry spot, we, visibly, our house is right there, looks, the west side of our house looks directly at it. I would say on a personal level, I would rather see a duplex than a triplex. Not that I want to have major development there, but let's say in general, you know, as a person who likes having your own property section, private. But if I have my own druthers, I think it, I think they're correct in the standpoint of it looks more traditional to go a duplex than a triplex. Because if you look at this, the dimensions of the building, currently, I think there's what, twenty-two-hundred square foot each, somewhere in there, and they're about, it's about a hundred-foot-long building now. So if you go to a triplex, you're looking at probably a hundred-and-fifty-foot-long building, which is a, potentially, which is a, if it's the same size, which is a very large building, just to look at from a residence, let's say, residential standpoint in that entry area, at least right in the beginning of it, at least. Obviously, ordinances are ordinances, and you make that decision, but I would just say from the personal standpoint on that. I have more of a dislike for the increase in, you know, the height going above any requirements personally, but if they limited the occupancy space and it doesn't impact our fire department, then I gather that might mitigate that. I, I don't know, that's just my only two cents in this, but this is what I wanted to point out. I see their intent, and I would probably personally rather see a duplex than a triplex if I'm looking at it. Not that that should alter you, but just at least one person other than Facebook telling me what they...
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Barb Punch from twenty-four Madison Ave. I am the butter to the property, I'm not good with directions, but if you're looking at the larger building there, we're kind of across the wetlands from that, that's the back of my home. And I guess my question would be, is there any plan to leave trees behind that? I know you said parking is going to be behind the building. So I'm just wondering, right now, as I look out at my house, there's, we have trees on our property, then it goes into wetland, and then there's a small rise, I believe, where this property is being built. And if, I'm just curious to see how that would impact us as far as from a visual end of things. Because again, I think thirty-five feet is a rather large building. My other, I guess, suggestion or hope is that if we were to consider it, maybe asking to have some type of, I believe they call it a balloon test, that they fly a balloon to that height and get an idea of what that looks like. Again, I'm not very, I can't picture things, so if somebody physically puts something up there, then we could see, oh, that's actually not that bad, or, oh, wow, that's extremely high. So that would be it for me.
Oh, they need to answer, don't they? Oh, okay. Would you please respond to that concern?
Twenty-four Madison.
I did not bring glasses with me, nor did I bring a scale. But when I, when I take the center-taller building and I use the scale that's denoted on here with my finger and the pencil, I appear to be in excess of seven-hundred feet from the building to the property line closest to us that's on Madison Ave, which is not you.
Right, that, I believe it's my neighbor.
Yep, that's twenty-nine Madison. And then you have the distance going back to your house so far, for, to give you just at least some perspective of, at least I'm hoping to be exact.
No, no, no.
But I believe that you're probably in excess of eight-hundred feet, maybe nine-hundred feet, from where that building was.
Right. And I, I just know that, again, that there's not a lot of trees back there because of all the wetlands, so that's why I wasn't sure how visible it would be from.
So if I can tell you elevation differences, I don't think I have something that would tell me who generally sit lower than yourself.
Again, I'm not really sure if I'm...
I don't have the information from here to help me with that.
I mean, can you speak to the plan for landscaping, then, of her concern of how many, what we plan on clearing versus...
So the buffer that is along the wetlands on our side of the property by the environmental scientist is a sixty-foot buffer going along it. So we have that, plus the distance of the wetlands going across, going across there. I mean, certainly, we could have some sensitivity relative. Normally, this is an instance where I would offer some planting, some trees, some something, but at nine-hundred feet, there's nothing that a sixty-foot tree is going to ever do to help, help with that. I, I think that the distance probably mitigates the concern best.
And the fact that, so what he is saying is, he does have a legal obligation to stay sixty feet from the wetlands, so anything within those sixty feet cannot be disturbed.
No, but I understand, I just didn't know his parking lot, were they going to clear the parking lot right, you know, within sixty feet of the wetlands, or is he planning on leaving trees between the wetlands and the parking lot?
Our intent, other than the common, is to leave any trees that are not in the disturbed construction area. So if there's not a need for the guys to go further than they have to build, they certainly would not be going further than they have to build.
Okay.
And that is the majority of that I have to pay. Really, it's, it's untouchable.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Do, has, has the board come up with any more questions they have for the applicant? Nope. All right.
One of the things that's required is that you show there's a hardship here, and it strikes me that it's, it's almost totally aesthetics. You're getting the density, you get two-hundred-and-fifty-six bedrooms, I guess, and I, I don't see, it's, it's, it's an aesthetic thing exclusively, and it, I mean, you can still do what you want to do with a property, and I don't see where that part...
Sensitivity to that, it puts us in an awkward spot. It puts us in a very awkward spot, giving a director butter something that they do not want and object. And so I'm, I'm glad to do it, but the hat that I hang on is I try here.
Right.
To begin with, everybody has that, that perception that we would go to triplexes and give butter at spot-on feedbacks with the length of the building that we go to trying to maintain the same type of housing stock. You probably go larger than triplexes. Once you, once you absolve the look of the stately colonial, you probably go into just a traditional condominium, sort of, for it. I, I just want to clarify that, because there seems to be an assumption that, that it just puts the third one in the middle, and, and I don't think that's the way that it would play out. You would need to change up that look of that building so dramatically, so you didn't have a hundred-and-fifty-foot-long colonial architecture, it's very straight, very boxy. As you add more units to that, it gets to be big, boxy, that nobody really wants to look at. So we would have to probably dramatically change the architecture to be something else. And again, that's just clarifying that, that I hear the triplex, that the alternative is duplex or triplex, and that's probably not where, I don't want to leave that misunderstanding with the members of public.
Right, but, but it would be fair to say the other buildings are big, boxy buildings.
Designed with a specific intent to it. There's a single, big, boxy building that's in the center of it. They're meant to mimic architecture of past decades, centuries.
Anyway, rather than mimic, but...
Sorry.
Can, can you show us that picture of the, one of the traditional drawings of a, of an old New England village that, that showed larger houses, you know, larger structures, anyway? I, I'll tell you, by the way, while we're doing that, where we got that is in your application, it says, well, the applicant could construct triplexes.
Gotcha.
The middle unit of a triplex is often dark, due to the limited number of windows, and duplexes are more desirable for unit occupancy.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, so, and, and single-family or more...
Yeah, I don't, and I understand where you got that now. I don't want to leave the misconception that if we don't do duplexes, that the public is going to leave here thinking we're doing triplexes.
Triplexes, right, I understand that, yeah.
Because we probably come back with something.
But I mean, there is something different between a modern townhouse and, and that's why I'm asked for this to come up. You can see those larger structures in that picture, so that the ten-unit and eighteen-unit ones look like, like those. But you could also do, like, on the, on the right side of the center etching, where there's a, no, not that, yeah, that one, or the one just to the left of it underneath that clocktower or whatever. You have buildings that are between the sizes of those large center buildings.
Are you pointing to that, Ken?
That one there, yeah, and so, so...
That's almost identical in shape to what the duplexes proposed, with the shorter single-story wing and the center two-story colonial in the middle of it.
Yeah.
We'd also point out, in the typologies, there are one or two large buildings. There are a, a, a finite number of transitional buildings, and then it's usually single families to complete the definition of common, or at least that's what we've observed, I understand. So the answer is yes to all.
Okay.
If I might, I wonder if I could comment on a more theoretical basis to your correct assertion that the, the asks are a step. And it is common, and certainly on the board I serve on, that protection of the character of the community is one of the, the tenants and duties of, of the board. And I believe that's written into law, okay? It's Massachusetts, it's not New Hampshire, I do, we're, this is your town, this is your ordinance. But I'm an architect. Aesthetics are important, aesthetics are real. And it's translated, in my experience, as protection of the character, and that, I believe, is legal as well. So I, I think taking account issues of character, which do get into the gray area of opinion, is still valid, and shouldn't be, oh, it's just aesthetics. That is my opinion, so I, that's what I would share.
Well, you, you would agree that, I think one of the things you said was it would be difficult to achieve, but it sounded like you can do it in terms of making it a good-looking building if it was a triplex.
I have some very talented people, and I hope that, that's evident. They have a hard time doing something that's not attractive. But my job as their boss and the principal of firm is to try to put them in a game they can win. And the duplex is, that surrounds a common, is a game that they can win, and the real winners are the people who live there. Yes, they're very talented people, they can make something that's, that's attractive. But, again, my job is to give them the best opportunity, and I feel the best opportunity for the people who will be the residents of this town.
Thank you. You'd mentioned this earlier, sorry, you did. You talked about Glenn's comments, and I think that, just so you have a fair shot at that, we probably should read Glenn, Glenn's, you know, Glenn Greenwood, the town planner, because we weren't able to find minutes of the meetings in which the intent, all the was discussed, and Glenn was the one who wrote the ordinance, probably, pretty much, and explained to the planning board what they were, what the objectives were. He provided us some background by a memo.
Yeah, I'd be happy to read it.
So I think, yeah, it'd be great if you could read that and put it to the record.
Sure. All right, so this was a memo, memo to the chairman and members of the Kingston Zoning Board of Adjustment from Glenn Greenwood, our Kingston town planner. from Glenn Greenwood, our Kingston town planner, on March 13th. The Kingston ZBA is in the process of reviewing a request for a variance to the town's standards for multifamily development as submitted by Liberty Commons LLC. Their request specifically reads as follows. A variance to Article preamble 2B definitions, section 19, multifamily dwellings, to permit a two-family or duplex to be included within the definition of multifamily. The town of Kingston has taken very specific steps to plan for the location of multifamily housing in town. They also have been very clear in describing the type of unit that qualifies as multifamily. We have determined the threshold for multifamily as being structures with more than two dwelling units. This is the definition found in RSA 67443I. In a separate statute addressing just workforce housing, RSA 674582, the law states that multifamily workforce structures have five or more units. Our local ordinance allows such structures to have up to 24 units per building with a minimum of three units. The planning board has intentionally called out the land involved with this proposal as being the area in town that allows for the greatest residential density. Throughout town, in those areas zoned rural residential, which constitute more than half of the land area in town, two-family structures are allowed by right. The variance request in this instance reduces the residential density of the zone in a way not desired by the planning board or the supporting vote of the townspeople to zone the land in the manner it has been zoned. There is no harm to the applicant by the imposition of greater density in their proposed development. The importance of variances is typically tied to a property owner being restricted in their desire to construct a project due to the standards found in a zoning code. There is not a hardship created by the application of the ordinance in this case. The town's ordinance requires greater density in this zone in order to address the accepted need for increased housing stock. A variance of the town's standards actively works against achieving the zones district's
Could you help us with, we believed we heard something suggesting that it was an increase of density in bedrooms?
Yep.
And this speaks to your question that you had earlier.
Sure. I think it was in the last paragraph. The variance request in this instance reduces the residential density of the zone in a way not desired by the planning board or the supporting vote of the townspeople to zone the land in the manner it has been zoned.
I guess Glenn's not here, so we can't ask him. But I can follow that logic going into it. The bedrooms, as discussed, are the same, and he's suggesting that we're reducing density by getting a variance. Am I understanding that correctly, the same way you...
That is the way it sounds to me. Would you agree?
It sounds to me like he's saying that too. And we have established that the density is...
The density.
...determined by whether you have six...
I just want to make sure.
Six duplexes or three, or four triplexes.
That is, that paragraph is why I brought that up earlier, because it did seem to conflict in my mind as to what he was trying to get across there. Do you have any more closing thing, any comments before we, or do you have any more questions?
Well, I guess it's gonna ask, do you want them to go through, split this now and go through the...
The variance criteria?
Give them, have them...
An opportunity?
...that they would hear.
We can do that. So, why don't we?
On each of the two.
So, just because I have this one in front of me first, why don't we go through the five criteria? So, we as a board vote on each criteria individually. So, if at any point one of them fails, you'll know what area, or which of the five.
What I was, we're thinking is, is they give the presentation of the five, then we close the hearing part, and then we go into delivery.
Yeah, I'm just explaining how we tend to vote.
Okay, yeah, I think we do vote.
Yeah, we don't vote on it as a whole, we vote it as individual criteria. So, so as speaking to the variance for the definition of multifamily, would you like to, I guess, just go through and say, so the first criteria is the proposed variance will not be contrary to the public interest because, sorry, the proposed variance will not be contrary to the public interest because, so...
We can appreciate the sentiment of the board that we've gotten from you.
Okay.
And I can offer one of the two things. We're not here to try to jam something down your throat that you guys don't want. That's not the intent. The intent was to be more harmonious with the neighborhood that we have, and I can feel where you guys are based off of Glenn's letter with that. I don't think, and this is a question for you, whether your perspective, if I had Michael draw the buildings that would be replaced by, would change your perspective of that? So, my question is whether, whether you would like more information seeing what the appearance would actually look like, or if the perspective is more set into the actual verbiage of it.
Is really great and a whole lot better than your predecessor, you know, the bunch of block buildings, apartment buildings with flat roofs that just, just...
That's the word.
I got it. And this is, I'm not that torn on the height thing, but the, but as Rick has pointed out, you know, this, we have to really have a strong reason to reverse, as it says, negate that verbiage. And aesthetics, while, you know, as you say, it's very important, it's really not, you know, I've got a tough time with that here. But what I'm getting at is, are you leaning towards the requesting continuation to get something more information? Would help, I assume. What do you think?
I certainly don't want to continue to chase my tail if it's not something the board's supportive of. This is not one that we're here for. We believe it makes a better project that fits in better at town. If you guys are comfortable with knowing that I tried and me saying the no, I don't mean that sound weird, but I hear what the abutters say for feedback. I just have to, for my own side of it, feel that I tried. And no is an acceptable answer, and that's the inclination that I feel from the board, in which case I would, I would probably just withdraw the application rather than make that go through each of the criteria for you. And we would redesign the project in a way that conforms to your regulations. And you know what that looks like, you just described it. So that we can, we can not have the issue of not conforming. It is our intent to conform. We just thought we could do better.
Right, which I totally appreciate, and I'm glad you're bringing this up. And I do want to speak, I want to, I think I agree with Peter right around this, like, so I think it's really helpful that you've brought up that, I don't know that we're at an answer yet to, I mean, I don't know that I'm at an answer yet, I'm trying to understand this.
Yeah.
Right, because, because this is a, you know, obviously a well-thought-out, it meets, fits within our community. I mean, again, so that's the piece. I think we're struggling with, okay, how would we make that work if we were going to say yes to, to this and make the variance so that, again, you know, we're, we have a legal standing on what we're deciding here? So, because you can come back with boxes, and we would not even be consulted perhaps, right? So, that's the other piece, right? You would just bypass this whole board, so...
Right.
So, I do think there's a lot to take in here for us to consider.
I think we need to table it.
And I don't think it's an easy process.
I think we need to table it and come back.
And the density piece is not going to change. So, so, so I appreciate Glenn's comments, and then that's actually, I mean, I guess we're having a bit of a discussion, so we would normally have a discussion. So, this is a...
Deliberation.
Yeah, a deliberation around it, but this is a preamble, I guess, if you will.
So, I guess where I'm at is that I also appreciate what you guys have put forward, design-wise and all of that. And I understand Glenn's comments, and I feel that the zoning board is here to figure out what is the best use of a piece of land, and is an application that comes before us an appropriate use. This is zoned commercial one, but it is also available to be somewhat residential because of the multifamily aspect of it. And then it just becomes, what does that multifamily look like for this piece of land? And for me, the density is the density. I realize that there's an RSA that says it needs to be at least three, but it also comes down to the same number of bedrooms are going in, and then it becomes, what do we want our town to, to look like? And does this, just giving on this RSA, allow for what we need for housing for this particular piece of land and still fit with what we see as a plan for Kingston?
Well, when I look at this and when I hear what you're saying, I wonder, can your project be completed without variances? Can it still be aesthetically pleasing? Like, I feel like your firm can do that.
That's a subjective question.
It is a subjective question.
And you are correct in your interpretation that I can leave here and come back with five 24-unit buildings that reduce infrastructure costs, that serve as an abrupt transition that leaves our abutter looking at a very large building, several of them going into it. And I feel a little beaten up, and this isn't a personal one that I have coming into here. I'm really just trying to do the best that we can with it, and I feel a little chastised by it, and I know you don't mean it to be, it's just the nature of what it is. We struggled with the same questions you did running through it. Because how do you know something's the right thing to do and then find the support to do it? And how do you stand and tell somebody that you did something that you knew wasn't the right thing to do because you didn't think within the deviation of error because it's a variance? Just by definition of what it is, you're correct, they don't fit the rules. There's nothing that's off on that. So, I also don't want to just continue to chase my tail. We have some contractual applications with landowners, I do need to move the project ahead with it. We felt that we're coming here with something that was a little more of a no-brainer from a more ignorant standpoint of it. So, I don't mean to push you guys to discomfort. My thought or my suggestion is that I can withdraw it.
Yes, you can, but my personal opinion for the record is, my name's Patricia Pansiaco. I agree, it's a lot to think about. But a couple things...
Is your mic on?
I don't know, is it?
Yeah, yes.
A couple things have jumped out to me in listening to what you've had to say. And I agree, I'm a little partial, but we have here as a developer, looking to go above and beyond here. He's looking to build value. A community like this brings a whole lot more value to the community here in the town than five or six big box buildings. It's, it's just far more attractive, and it's going to have a higher value. People are going to want to live there. The other thing that comes to mind, and this is just from a broader perspective, is zoning lines, when we all draw them on a map, they're very harsh. They get drawn where, you know, the vision, but they often don't take into account what's already there. And it's this board's job to smooth those edges. And that is the purpose of a variance. It's not negating your ordinance. I've heard that a couple of times. It's not. It's relieving the strict application of the ordinance to a particular site that's in a unique location like this. It's caught between two state highways, residential all around it and commercial across the street.
We can get up to a long one, but...
And the access is challenging, that part I don't know a whole lot about. What he's trying to do is create a smooth transition so everybody's happy, and the abutters are not all worked up because they got big boxes in there. You go in, in many communities, and I've worked in lots of communities, the first thing you hear when you put big boxes in, oh, there's drugs coming, there's bad people going to move in, right? I mean, we hear this all the time. And I applaud the town for looking to adopt an ordinance to encourage more affordable housing and mixed housing and multifamily housing. That's absent in a lot of communities. But the mixed use that we all had at the turn of, turn of the century, when all these designs and these nice buildings were built, it's all coming back. Everything comes full circle. And that's what he's trying to achieve here, is a mixed-use type of community that's valuable. So, I, in my opinion, and this is up to Keith, I would table this, and maybe we talk to Glenn about what his thoughts are, and everybody have a little more time to think about it rather than feeling like pressured and you're on the hot seat. Maybe you have some pictures of triplexes or plans that we can look at and say, well, if we do this, we do that, and maybe it works. But I know I've been in those middle units, and they're dark and dreary, and nobody wants them. That goes to value, and if you're looking to build your tax base, that's not the way to go because there's very little light in those units, and they're just not as pleasing to be in. So, that would be my two cents here. But zoning isn't meant to handcuff you. Building codes and fire codes, while they're really, really important, they don't think about aesthetics. They look at public safety as they should. It's up to people like him to come up with something, a place and a look where people want to be and call home. So, it's up to you, Keith, if you want to withdraw, or you want to try to, you know, give the board a little time to digest what we've shown them this week. It's totally up to you.
True, that is just a procedural question, I can withdraw it.
You can withdraw it, then you have to reapply.
For permission.
Right. And I don't know if maybe even, maybe fewer duplexes mixed with some ugly triplexes, maybe that would work too. I mean, that may be another option. And I don't, like I said, I don't know how garages fit in with triplexes. I can't imagine a front-loading garage with a tall triplex.
That's what it would be.
Oh, those are horrible.
And you still keep saying, the way that you would offset the interior rear units is utilize the efficiency of construction, being inside, having no windows, no siding on those walls, and do a few more of them because we would have to utilize those to offset not having as many duplexes and reduce values of it. So, the project, but that's nothing to do with you guys. From the developer's perspective, starts to change. Can we move on?
How to get a developer to put out a skyline?
Yes.
It's a hole in a roof.
No, it's a liability, Mike.
I mean, to all due respect, I think this is, this is a discussion you guys need to have. I mean, I think it's not for us to have that discussion because obviously, you could reduce the density and build different types of homes, and the question is how much money are you going to make in that respect over going to maximum density? You're not going to want to build ugly homes or ugly places because they're not going to sell as well, and you're not going to make the money that you'd make otherwise. So, I mean, I don't think it's for this board to try to resolve that of what's in your best interest. So, I mean, we have to deal with the ordinance as it's given to us, and so I respect what you're, you're trying to do, and, I mean, you want to maximize the number of units.
There's no maximizing. This doesn't allow me to maximize.
It's not about that.
You keep saying it that way. It's not. It's the same.
No, 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 I get that, but I'm saying you could build different types of structures if you decided not to put as many units on this piece of property.
We could build the same number of units. We don't have to reduce the density to build different structures as it were.
Right, right, but I'm saying you have all kinds of opportunities to do mix and match and so on and so forth. And like to say that, well, we'll come back with a, with pictures of different buildings for us. I mean, we're not design people as far as what looks good to one may not look good to the other, and if you know what I'm saying, so it's...
I don't actually follow you on that part. Could you articulate that a little more?
To try to, if you're gonna, you talked about perhaps coming back with a different drawing or something, that, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna like that, so to speak. And I don't think that's, that, I don't think that's the issue.
That's what the first question I asked is, and you just answered the question, so thank you very much for that. Could we move on to the height one and come back to it based off of that answer, just so I could digest that? so I could digest that in my head?
Yep. So really, now, what you are looking for? Oh, yeah. Out the door, down the stairs, to the left, and keep going down the stairs and then take a right. Yeah, no worries. So you want to gauge our, where we're standing on the variance for the height is what you're-
I'd like to get through something tonight.
Yes. So just for public record, I can read what the Kingston Fire Department sent over to us because I don't think the public has had, has been privy to those notes. A productive meeting with the applicant Keith and his architect Brent was held at the town hall. Discussions regarding building heights ensued. It was stated the fourth floor of the multi-unit building was specified as storage only. Additionally, a cupola on the main multi-unit building would be more than 55 feet. It was relayed to the applicant that if the building was sprinkled with no occupancy to be had above the third floor and all NFPA requirements for fire protection and life safety were met, the plans were satisfactory for all fire department concerns. Water supplies and system locations would be discussed further in the process as approvals were granted by other town boards. Furthermore, the applicant had stated the conceptual design called for several duplexes within the development. The applicant was advised there would be no issue regarding life safety or fire protection regarding the construction of those duplexes. But if triplexes or larger units were to be constructed, they would then be considered multifamily and would need to be sprinkled. It was a productive first meeting with subsequent meetings to follow pending forward progress by the applicant. So our ordinances state a height of no higher than 35 feet. The application is for 50, 55 feet because of the cupola.
Period. Fifty-five, period. We had a plus or minus when we wrote it.
Oh, yeah, 55.
Asterisk cupola.
Yes, okay. So the height of the roof line itself would be 55 feet.
So just to be clear, 55, not the 50 that's written.
I, I'm going to ask presented.
Okay, thanks. Peter, you had a comment about aesthetics and the height. Do you, I don't know if you wanted, I'm not putting you on the spot, but I was curious if you had a comment about that.
So-
Go ahead.
All right, so what, what, we had very limited board discussion on the height. The fire department, Chief Kelleran has given his approval for the way that it is because there will be no residences above the 35 feet, which means that his apparatus and for life safety and all of that are, are met.
So I'm curious, right? I mean, it's an interesting, so outside of the applicant, right, there are two different heights that are permissible. One is 35 and one is 45. Forty-five if it was, if I'm reading it or understanding it, right?
Forty-five for non-residential.
Right. So, so we could have a 45-foot non-residential square, I mean, essentially a box store there, and that would be permissible. But residential, we're saying it cannot be, I mean, the ordinance is saying cannot be above 35 on the roof line. Unless we want to have a flat roof so we could do, you know, they could have a flat roof of their third building.
Yeah, I, I think the, the answer was that 35 feet was at the time what the fire department felt comfortable with as far as having residences. And it sounds to me that in your meeting, what you discussed was that there wouldn't be any residences above the 35-foot mark.
Correct.
And again, you know, that would be if you build a flat-top, three-story apartment building that capped off at 35 feet, you'd have residences, but the ceilings of the residence would be 35. So what they're looking for here is, is again, as you've talked about, the aesthetics of having a hip roof is significant, significantly compared to a box roof, a flat roof. The cupola, by the way, is, we do have something in the ordinance, I can't remember where it is exactly, but it is excluded from the roof height. They're talking about the peak of the roof being-
Yes.
That, so that, that's not an issue, and I think that was probably part of your discussions too. 55 feet is pretty tall, so that's the 35, that's basically 25 feet from the, from the ceiling of the residential area to the hip of the roof.
Twenty feet, yes. About 20 feet.
About 20 feet, yeah. So aesthetically, that, it makes sense. Anything less would be a very shallow pitched roof and in, not in, in concord with the design that they're achieving. And quite frankly, I, if the fire department's, the whole intent of the lowering to 35 is the fire department, and if they're happy with that, I, I, I don't see an issue.
I am in agreement with that. My main concern was fi, was, was a fire hazard. And when we received the letter from the chief stating that he felt that they could easily handle any emergencies the way it was set up.
Your application is 50, but you're saying 55. Am I wrong?
The buildings that we have presented are 55. If the application said 50, I'm afraid the written application is in error.
Yeah, it said 50 plus or minus, approximately 50, so we're-
Okay.
We're putting it on-
So 50 plus or minus, 55 is the revised, 55, zero.
We're putting it on record that it was 55 feet-
Yes.
-was the final number.
Yeah. And that would, if, if we go through the procedures in both, and I, I mentioned earlier that, that your discussion with the fire chief about the, you know, residents above the 35 mark, and, and then the motion would have to be for the exact value. And I think based on the public notice, having said 50 plus or minus, that, that's what I was asking, what's, how much is plus or minus? I think that's within the limitations that we could determine here, but we do need a hard number.
The only other piece is just whether, you know, again, minus the aesthetics, right? You can make a third building on that end that just, all three look the same or in the same height and have a cupola on top of it. I know the architect doesn't like that. I'm not saying I like that. I'm just, just saying if, right, that would need a variance. You could do all of that and you would not actually have to have that variance. So I just want to put that out there also as part of our conversation. Not that I'm super concerned about. I, I think the, the fire piece is the, the main issue.
So are you saying that you, you don't want to withdraw the application? Are you, I'm not sure where you are on that. You, a minute ago, it sounded like you- Well, there's two different applications.
Okay, so this one you want to go forward. I asked to move on to this one while I contemplated where I was at on the other one.
It didn't sound like they wanted to go through one at a time. It sounded like they've given their presentation, they kind of wanted to feel us out where we were at and then, is that correct?
You guys, every town does things a little bit differently. If you're comfortable with the information that you have and have written an application, it does sound like I'd like to ask for a vote on the heights so that I know where I stand on that one because I'm a little less clear. And that probably plays in, and then we can revisit the conversation on, on how we proceed with the other one.
Okay. I mean, we're happy to close the meeting on the variance for the height and go into our deliberation and vote on it if you are okay with us moving forward. Okay. So at this time, we'll close to public comment. We will have our deliberation as a board and then vote on the criteria.
Yeah, just to, so they don't want to read through their, their reasons by each one?
No. Their reasons are here and unless we have any, unless, unless you know of any questions before we-
Sure, thank you.
Before I close on anything that they've already written? Okay.
And I just, you feel comfortable you've covered the hardship on the height with what's in here? Is that, that's what you're saying, right?
We believe we've provided enough information for you to take a vote on. Yes.
Is there any discussion you want to have amongst the board members before we go through each criteria? Any questions amongst us, Bert?
I think in, in general, right, that it would be helpful for me, because this is a mass, a big project, right? This is arguably the biggest housing project. I don't know, Peter, you may speak to it, or Rick, you can, whether there's been a bigger one in town. But really to how, how to carry, again, we can read the letter of the law as it's written, so to speak, but whether we are here to hold the intent of the law or also holding the overall feel and look of our town, right? I mean, I think there's a lot of pieces to this that are, given the scale of the project, that need to be held as we're having this discussion. So I don't know how to say that more eloquently, but I don't think it's just a simple, no, you're not meeting it, or yes, let's do what we want to do on that, so.
I think, yeah, at this point, I think we can curb any more discussion about, we realize that they could have done a number of things to meet the ordinance. That's not why they're here. They're here to ask for relief from it for aesthetic reasons, for a number of reasons. So I think we're all at that understanding that it is designed in a way that is not fitting our ordinance, but that's why they're here tonight. And it's our, it's up to us to decide whether or not-
Not fitting, but is, is it contrary to the intent?
But is it contrary to the purpose of the ordinance? Yes. So why don't we start with, make sure I have the right, sorry, so much paperwork. So the first criteria is that the proposed variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Does anyone have any statements in regards to that criteria?
I mean, the sloped roof is aesthetically pleasing and fitting to our town. The cupola is very similar and fitting for Kingston. I don't see it altering the essential character of the neighborhood or threatening public health, safety, welfare, public rights. I mean, it all seems okay.
Those are the two big legal criteria, I think, that's on her head there, but that we have to evaluate in, in that.
That, yeah, in, in my opinion, it doesn't, it's not contrary. It doesn't put any residents at danger. It doesn't, it's been looked at by our fire department and they've deemed it not a safety hazard to have it be that tall.
Right. And, and the, indeed, that's what we talked about, that, that was the intent, was residential safety, fire safety. And this is not contrary to that.
All right. So we're saying it would not be contrary to public interest.
With presumed condition that there are no residences above the 35.
All right, how does, let me know if you need to add anything or change anything. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because with presumed condition that no residences are above 35 feet, it meets public safety requirements?
Sounds like a decent finding, in fact.
So why don't we vote on that? Do we need a motion to accept that? What's the order?
No, you can just vote on that.
Just vote on that, okay.
Vote on those criteria, just on the reasons, yeah.
Okay. So if you agree with that statement, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The spirit of the ordinance would or would not be observed because? So again, is my understanding the spirit of the ordinance was mostly to do with public safety concerns?
Yeah, the height, the height, the height ordinance is entirely based on-
Okay. So the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because there are no residents above 35 feet and minimize the safety concern? How, how would you, how would you see that?
Yeah, I think, I think the spirit, intent of the ordinance is met because the height of the residence is capped at 35 feet that the ordinance requires.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Granting the variance would or would not do substantial justice? So the loss of the individual must be outweighed by the public's gain for this not to pass?
And I, I don't see a public gain. So that-
All right, so it would do substantial justice because there would be, there's no public gain?
There's no public gain, not, no public gain that outweighs the loss of the individual? And I would say, in fact, that the public gains from granting of the variance because it improves the aesthetics of the project.
All right, so granting the variance would do substantial justice because there is no public gain that outweighs the loss of the individual and it improves the aesthetics of the project. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. For the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties would or not, would not be diminished.
This would, I would say go to the comment of one of the people who lives in Mountain Madison, that there's a risk that it's visible more than if you had a flat-roofed apartment. But I, I think, you know, the distance equation and the, and the natural vegetation, especially towards the boundary line, would mitigate that significantly. I don't, I don't think you're going to see something, something-
I would say-
We just did a balloon test last month on a, a cell tower that was 140 feet and it was, just barely made it above the trees from the neighboring houses, yes.
I mean, I also think it comes down to, even if you can see the building through the trees, would you rather look at a building that's got a flat roof or a one that has a peaked roof? And I think-
Excellent point. As well as, even though it's commercially zoned, it keeps, it's the flavor of the area.
It's the character.
It's the character of the neighborhood, which is rural residential.
Right. And any, any concerns about vegetation could be addressed at the planning board stage as well.
Exactly, yeah. Bubbling and vegetated.
All right, so, so we're saying for the following reasons, the value of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. Because the structures would-
Be with-
The design of the structure-
This, yeah, it would be certainly better than, than a commercial.
It's within the character of the surrounding residential areas.
Thank you, that's it. All, so you need to read that again or? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And this is always the fun one.
Exactly.
Owing to special conditions of the property, so this condition has to do with unnecessary hardship. Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because- denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because? And there's two parts to this. There is or is not a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that precision, provision to the property because?
Okay, so owing to the, because? First of all, the question becomes, what are the special conditions of the? Sorry, Adam. First of all, the owing, the question is, what are the special conditions of the property that distinguish it? And that's what they addressed in this first response under A. And they're saying because of its frontage on 125 and 107 detracts from its residential use. And detracts, I don't know why that would detract from the residential.
I think you have to continue, and prevents convenient access for typical commercial uses. So there's no access onto 125 currently?
There isn't, and the right of way that comes down, that.
Comes off of 107.
Right out at the, at the intersection, that was an issue when we had a warehouse proposed on the northern end of this, on one of the lots, on the northern end of the project, was abandoned because there was no way to get all those tractor-trailings trucks out right next to the road.
And?
I'm sorry.
And that access empties directly at the light, correct? Which really is a hazard.
It did, yeah, that was, I think, when the state built that, it met the legal requirement of providing access to the property.
Okay.
And that was it.
Well, when I look at this, it show that because of special condition of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, across the street from 125 is a warehouse complex composed of several buildings.
Of the wood, northern wooden products?
I forgot the name of the warehouses, but there's like, there's like five or six buildings there.
Yeah.
That's.
Well, I, I think that, that limited access section of 125 is, is.
But they don't have access from 125, they have access from Debo Road.
Correct, yeah.
The same exact layout, isn't it?
Right, and it's, it's up there, and it's, I think that that is a, it's similar, but it's, that's a distinguishing factor compared to other properties in C1 or C2 or C3, where you have access, frontage access. That's a limited access section of 125, and.
But we're, so just, we're talking about the height, though, here.
Yeah, I know, but what's, what is there about, but what are just?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that's true. What, what is it about those, that property? Do we mean you'd have to go higher, as I guess? Do you have any?
Because the special condition is the property's frontage of Route 125. So what does that really have to do with height?
Well, it's down at the second, under B, really. I mean, A is not, we, that doesn't, that isn't actually. The height issue, we need to have that addressed, which I don't see.
I don't see height on this, really.
But, you know, B is the aesthetics for the piece. Again. This, this is just a tough question for us to always answer every time, so we have to get it right.
It is, it's, it's, I'm looking at what the, the strict application of the height limitation will prevent the property from being reasonably used in strict performance. And the question is, is it reasonable to have that height restriction? It's not, the height restriction issue is not based on the special conditions of the properties, specifically the limited access, like, yeah. I hadn't really thought when I was reading this, but you're right. Even though it has a unique aspect to it, it's, they're not related. I don't know how you get beyond that, frankly, that's pretty tough.
Yeah, isn't that why you brought that up?
Well, that's why I.
Why you said that, yeah.
Said. There, if the criteria in sub-paragraph A, having not been established, this is the final part of the unnecessary hardship test, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if, owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict performance with the ordinance, and the variance therefore, is therefore necessary to enable reasonable use. So that, that, that criterion only comes into effect if we find that sub-paragraph A and A and sub-paragraphs 1 and 2 under that don't apply. So the question here is, the way the wording is written in the state requirements is that, they're not, owing to special conditions of the property, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because there's no fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. And the proposed use is reasonable or not reasonable on because? And I, I think the easiest part of that one to answer is the second part of that, which is it's a reasonable use because it's, the use is residential and it's permitted use in the property. So that's, that's not the hard one to beat. The question is whether there's a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance, which is.
Which is safety.
Safety, public safety. And the specific application of that provision to the property.
Which?
Which would be saying that you've got to cut the building height down. There's a relationship between the building height and that safety. And we've kind of already said in the early ones, is there, isn't because of the restriction on the residential height.
Because then we were, that would mean that there is a fair and substantial relationship?
But, but the catch, the catch-all that is the owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area.
That's why I brought up the warehouse, because it's not distinguished from that.
What do you mean? They both have, of course, the use is.
The warehouse is a permitted use.
Warehouse is a permitted use in the zone, and it has the same special conditions, which is the, the one that they're arguing is the access issue.
Would the special condition of the property be that it's zoned commercial, which can be multifamily, which, so it could go either way of being truly commercial?
Right, right. That's true, the height restrictions are only there because of the.
Residential aspect of it.
Residential aspect of it, and.
And they, they're negating the concern for that needing to be 35 feet because they're keeping all the residences below 35 feet?
Yeah, it's not, actually, that's not a condition of the property, it's a condition of the use, that, that height's in there. But a fair and substantial relationship. I, I don't think there's a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance and the application, but I can't tie it to a special condition of the property.
Because the special condition of the property is the frontage of Route 125 and Route 107. That is what the special condition is, right?
That's, that's what they're.
All right, so because it has limited, because it has limited access, they're choosing, they're saying that it's better as a residential area because they would be moving the access down further, getting away. It's inappropriate to dump.
For, for a, for a commercial use.
For commercial use. Therefore, it need, it would need to be a residential use, and that restricts their height to 35 feet.
Yeah.
Any comments on that?
I don't see how you get beyond it, because I don't see that.
I, I agree, that's.
Can you just say that again?
It looks like we're working really hard to try to avoid. It's not like it's an undecided lot and we're trying to, you know, put something on there that, that the land doesn't lend itself to that.
What's your concern, Rick?
I, I don't, I don't know what the actual special condition allows them not to have a reasonable use of, enjoy a reasonable use of the property. I mean, they. In large part, this is where that whole issue comes up, how these variances are often decided. And that is, if you can do something, if you can comply with a variance, I mean, with, with the ordinance, without it causing degradation, I mean, without this causing a real hardship that is based on something about the property, then you should comply with the variance. You know, if you want to build less than 20 feet from your property line, but there's no reason why you, you know, there's, there's nothing, like a rock ledge or something keeping you from, you know, building a house 20 feet from the property line, then you shouldn't get a variance to put it in that 20-foot zone. And that's, and that's just particularly the case that's come before, there's more in the past, and said, you know, that there's no reason why you couldn't put the house where you want it, where it needs to go, not where you want to put it. So.
Like, the height of the building can be lower?
Yeah, you could build.
It can be.
Yeah, you could build.
It can be.
Yeah, as, without, they could come in with five boxes with flat roofs, and. It's, it's not the best infrastructure in the town, but it's.
Would a distinguishing factor of it be that it's surrounded by single-family residential homes? And not surrounded by other commercial buildings?
Yeah, but how would that affect the height?
It would affect the residents around with the, the design choice that they have to make because of the variances.
Yeah, I mean, it, it is, it is challenging, right? I mean, because we could put a, again, a warehouse could be next to, you know, the gentleman that spoke to us, right, and he could be looking at a 45-foot box, literally.
And they don't have to come before us at all for.
Right, and there's nothing, we would not have a conversation about this, so. I do know that this is, you know, often we are relying on the applicant to figure this out, but these are such complicated, and I know there's an attorney present, but again, the overall project here, I don't know whether it's on us to have to figure this piece out or not. I guess that's a little bit of a question for us, but, and we're struggling with it to be able to put it into the language that we would need to, so that we are actually, no one's going to question what we're saying. I mean, we don't, we're trying to make it based on a legal argument here, right? Or grounded argument. And so, so we're saying it's not sufficient enough that the applicant would like to do this as a part of the overall piece of a project? And they have to have a variance to be able to do this? And, and it's only if there's something distinguishingly challenging about the piece of property itself that we can grant the variance?
That's the way the state has written it. And. Yeah, they have to have a reason why they can't reasonably do, follow the ordinance.
Right, so, but if the.
That reason has to be based on, and, you know, we've said before that all these other criteria have been met because we felt it's a benefit to the overall project of the town to have this design.
Sure.
And it's not contrary to the intent of the ordinance because it meets the safety requirements that the ordinance was designed for.
Right, so just hypothetically, if the ordinance, again, was that residential, could be 60 feet, we, again, wouldn't be having this conversation? And that was based on accordingly firefighter.
At, he does.
At his point in time.
At that point in time, and, and that's.
And, and so if we don't grant the variance and we're saying to the applicant, he could go back and, I mean, somebody could say, let's change the ordinance to 60 feet, which is my arbitrary number here.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Even though, again, we could put in all kinds of other things that would be less appealing, so. Yeah, I guess for me, I want to be clear that, or, right? You know, again, not just reacting without trying to be able to create. Something else is going to go in there at some point, unless, I don't know how that's going to change, right? So how to think about this, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm obviously fumbling for words, but.
I mean, enforcing the ordinance would not create an unnecessary hardship. They could just make their building smaller. They don't need, it's not like they're burdened. It's not like they can't do the project.
Right.
They can still do the project.
Right. And the point, I think the attorney was trying to make this point, is that, and I know the applicant did, is that the zoning board can make the decision that it's in the better interest of the town to grant the variance. But the state's requirements for granting a variance seem to then tie the board to doing that, to bypassing that special condition department.
So if we look at the explanation under the variance criteria guidelines, right, under the sort of explanation column, it says, determine the purposes, determine the purpose of the zoning restriction in question. The applicant must establish that because of the special conditions of the property, the restriction as applied to the property does not serve that the purpose in a fair and a substantial way. So again, it's on the applicant, but what is it serving to say no to the applicant? I guess, how is that fair?
I guess I would say also the special condition of the property is that by choosing to make it residential, that is what caused the need for variance in the first place. This is a unique piece of property, because if you go one way or the other, if you go strictly commercial, there is no, there's a different height, but by choosing to go residential, now that kind of creates the hardship in itself, but.
And the applicant must establish that the special conditions of the property cause the proposed use to be reasonable. It, it doesn't seem like the proposed use is unreasonable, right, in the B category? And the use must not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, which it also does not do. does not do.
I wish I could use more help, I really...
So, that special condition of the property, the restriction as applied to the property does not serve that purpose in a fair and substantial way.
To me, I mean, that piece is accurate, is that it does not serve an affair in a substantial way. I'm not sure how it's substantially beneficial to not allow that variance, for example.
Right, to say no, because there's no residences, there's no safety concern.
Right, the safety piece has been met, so I'm not sure how that serves, or who, or what that is serving, again, with a greater sense of the scope of the project. So...
And they keep saying that the special conditions of the property...
The restriction as applied to the property does not serve that purpose in a fair and substantial way, I know, it's...
Yeah, but this is, and for the benefit of the people, what we're reading from is the Board of Adjustment New Hampshire Handbook that's produced by the New Hampshire Municipal Association, where they've taken all the case law and sort of give guidance to the boards on how they're supposed to do this. Because of the way the state law is written, it says the applicant must establish that the property is burdened by the zoning restriction in a manner that is distinct from other land in the area. That is the real problem that's, that we're having with this, is that there's nothing about that property that's distinct from the other properties in the area, as Kyle pointed out.
Other than it's zoned commercial and the other area property is residential, so that...
Well, that is true, it's permitted residential use with a different restriction, and so...
Right.
So, I think that would be maybe the argument, is that it's...
So, is that what the special condition is, that it's zoned residentially and commercially?
It's...
Because the hardship...
It's commercially zoned, but can allow for multi...
Under conditional use.
Multi-unit residential.
That complies to all the land in C1.
Right.
So, it's...
So, I don't think that is the special condition.
That's not the special condition.
But it's distinct from the other land in the area, which is residential. I mean, I'm just arguing, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess with a certain business, one by five is commercial and C1, yeah.
Well, on the other side of Depot is residential, it's residential abutting and residential, yeah, to the north.
I mean, I guess I would argue that any of the properties in C1 would have this same hardship on them, so it's...
That does not make it distinct.
But it makes the C1 area distinct, as a whole.
I think we're working really hard to try to get...
wording that we're comfortable with.
Something that we could justify, and prior boards have felt that, oh, well, you know, just go to court, but there's no way even the housing board would determine that we failed to properly apply the language of the ordinance. Conversely, if it went to court by people who were in opposition to this project, they certainly could find that we didn't follow the requirements of a variance and could overturn it.
So, I mean, should we just go back?
I don't know, are you ready to... Do we need to discuss this out, do we feel comfortable with it, or...
Do we feel, I mean, we don't even have anything written down yet as far as what we would be comfortable or not with.
I mean, the finding of fact can be that it, there was no unique, there was no distinguishing, no special conditions of the property that distinguish it from others, and therefore special hardship, I mean, the hardship, unnecessary hardship was not found to exist, in spite of how we may feel about it.
Right. So, there's that option, I mean, we can go ahead and we can write that, we can vote on it, they can also choose to withdraw, knowing that they've heard our discussion, and, because if we've made a final decision on something like this, they would have to bring new, if they wanted to reapply, they would have to bring new...
Yeah, because we're not at the point where we, the options are either to continue at the applicant's request, to deny without prejudice if we had not gotten to this point, and they could bring it back without making changes. And that mostly is if there was insufficient information, or, you know, it was basically if they didn't want to continue, and we still didn't feel we had enough information, we could deny without prejudice. Then the third option is that you can vote to deny, or, and then they would, if you voted to deny, they could reapply with new information or new plans, plans which substantially change. If they changed the plans, as the applicant pointed out, he could produce plans that wouldn't even need to go to the ZBA. Or they could produce new plans and come back with the same variances and maybe figure out something, a different way of presenting it, so, or if we'd made a mistake is what I believe we'd appeal, so...
So, I might ask, how, okay, so, given those pieces, how is justice being served by not granting this variance? If we were to play this out, how is justice being served here?
Which was, which was one of the questions we asked earlier, right, that how is, would be determined that justice, substantial justice would be done by granting the variance? And then, I don't think it would be, quite frankly, I don't think justice would be served by failure to grant the variance, but I don't know how, how we meet that, the requirements.
That could legally stand up if questioned.
Right, if challenged, would legally stand up, then... We can't just keep people...
No, I know. We do not want to do that.
Well, so, again, we could say, so, I could propose, right, some variation of that the applicant, that there... The zoning restriction in the C1 area, the height restriction, right?
Height restriction in the C1 area.
I mean, again, I can say that it does not serve the purpose in a fair and substantial way, I guess we need the why. Because the 35 feet is based on safety, they're asking for one building, which we would make as a condition, for only one building at 55 feet. And then B is met by saying that the conditions of the property cause the proposed use is reasonable. So, I think B is met, I think it's the A piece.
I mean, quite frankly, you could say that one of the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area are the significant amount of wetlands that restrict the amount of buildable area for a project that meets the town's density requirements, and therefore the three stories was necessary in...
So, why don't we go with that, and then we can vote on, I mean, I think that, or...
So, the finding of fact would be that the, that the topography and hydrology of the parcel lend themselves to...
Higher density building?
It's a higher density building, or is a unique aspect of the property, and that essentially, it's easy to make the argument there's not a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application to that property.
And the reason, because is the hard part, because the increased density required by the... Wetlands on the property... Lend themselves to... A taller building. Is that struggling too hard to try to come to yes? If you were trying to defend that, would you have a tough time?
Well...
Do you want to just take a vote and see where we stand on that, or, I mean, we can't really do trial votes, but...
Right.
Can you just state what...
Yeah, so...
Without making a motion?
Yes, so, it's not about, it's, the finding of fact would be, there is not a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property, because the increased density required by the wetlands on the property lend themselves to a taller building. And the purpose, the proposed use is a reasonable one, because use is residential, which is permitted.
I mean, the fact that we have those other three multi-family buildings, you know, the 10-unit buildings that are all there, you could certainly make more, that wouldn't need to height adjustment, so I'm...
I know.
I'm arguing against my point, but, you know, because it doesn't need to be that high, again, to get back to the fact that aesthetically, it just looks better, I think, and that there's no substantial relationship between the safety requirement that 35 feet was put in there for, and the building height.
Right, so I don't think that, yeah, so whether we did the wetlands piece, Peter, I mean, I...
There's no hardship.
Yeah.
It's not creating a hardship.
There's no hardship. This isn't on the application.
And, and that...
We're just making, we're just trying to make something work.
I mean, we are at liberty to decide what special properties are, but they've got to be germane.
I mean, going off of what Shaw said earlier, and saying that the height restriction in the C1 area does not serve the purpose in a fair and substantial way, because the applicant placated the safety concerns through design, by saying that they were going to stay under 35 feet.
I think we should go with that.
And that truly is a, that is a special condition of this particular property, because the ordinance changes based on it being a C1 with a residential use, which is where I think I'm comfortable with, saying that and voting on that.
Okay.
Does that...
Yeah.
Okay.
And it only has to be a majority vote, three people have to say yes, so...
So, all in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So, that variance did not pass because of that one criteria.
We have to...
We have to make a motion.
So, yeah, someone needs to make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that the variance be denied because it failed to meet the criteria of unnecessary hardship.
Can we say without prejudice, so they can come back with the same plan?
No, we can't say that, we're denying it.
We're denying it, okay.
So, they can reapply with new plans.
No, it's not, a deny without prejudice would be if you hadn't granted, if you had asked for, or if you had decided you didn't want to go toward an extension, but we, as a board, determined that we didn't have enough information to make a vote, take the vote, but we got past that point because we took a vote, and so we're denying, so that the variances would be denied, and that, if we denied without prejudice, instead of taking a vote, then we would always take the vote to deny without prejudice, you'd be able to come back with the same plans and more information to meet the vote, but we, I think you presented all the information you could, this is really the chairman's point, but my point is that you...
Appreciate the effort.
It was certainly an effort, and, and you know, you're probably going down the wrong path when you're trying that hard to bypass the law, so... And quite frankly, I've seen that, and it's not a comfortable feeling, you don't get a, but it's not comfortable denying this either.
No.
Because I think we all agree here that we like the design, we like the design, and we're hoping that you come back with something.
Something we can, yeah.
Appreciate the board's effort.
So, at this point, we have not voted on the other variance, so would you like to withdraw that at this time?
We have to do the...
Oh, we have to, sorry, we have to complete.
We have to get a second, right?
We do, we need a second.
And then, I made the motion to deny on the basis that it failed to meet the single criteria of number five of the unnecessary hardship.
I'll second.
Okay, you can second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Okay, so, apologize for trying to figure all this out. So, yes, the variance for the height restriction was denied, we did not make a determination on the other variance that you applied for, for the multifamily definition, is that something you would like for us to continue with, or was... Is that something you would like for us to continue with, or was that something you would like to withdraw at this time?
I would like to withdraw and go to McDonald's.
Oh, but that reminds me, I gave you a seat and get the names written down. That's our secretary, because she's not here. And to say, you know, I didn't get the name.
You will receive a formal decision within, what do we usually say, within a week or two? Letters of decisions go out?
The decision has to be sent out within five business days, which is one week. St. Patrick's Day not being a legal holiday and also being on a Sunday doesn't count, Megan, because...
All right. Go to those pages. Yes, we are going to take a, what, 10 minutes? A five-minute bathroom break in case anyone needs one before we do have a... Is it technically a hearing, or?
What's that?
The Bird's Halls, is that technically a hearing, or is that just...
It's not a hearing.
All right.
It's, it's a...
We have a discussion to be had about a previous application.
A billion.
Okay.
We get there, it's...
Okay, I'm going to get rid of all the other paperwork I don't need.
What happens, there's a lot... We...
I wish we could, you know, swap things around on the agenda when we felt it was pertinent, but it doesn't work that way. Yes, welcome back.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Oh, thanks. I don't know if I'm okay with this yet.
I am.
Well, I started in that position the last time we were here.
I, I know.
Alessio was here.
He's done this before.
But...
The chairman, I mean.
I never got comfortable, and I, quite frankly, I know we're on... I never felt really comfortable being on two boards and being chairman of one of them, so...
Oh, I see.
So, which is fine. It's a, it's a good learning, learning, yeah, opportunity. And I don't mind talking, so... Okay, so the Bird's Halls are back because they had a variance granted on June 9th of 2022. And since then, plans have been changed that affect that variance. So we are going to take a look at the new plans and be sure that it aligns with the variance that was granted.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. What happens, I think we should explain it for the people at home, too. Is when the ZBA grants a variance and it goes to the planning board, and the planning board, the people, in order to make the planning board happy, they change their plans. It's got to come back to the ZBA to see if the new plans still meet the criteria. Hey, Adam, you have to get somewhere.
I think he's just closing the door because of the background noise.
Oh, okay, yeah, no, I mean, yeah, but you were going to leave at 8:30, I thought. Okay.
All right.
Anyways, to still meet the criteria of the variance. Same thing, it goes to the building inspector. For a private house like yours, it goes to the building inspector and the plans change. I know you can explain why, but it's got to come back here. We can, without having to conduct a whole new hearing, can determine, make the determination among the boards whether it's still in compliance with the variance that was granted. And then we can say that it's going to be okay according to the new plans that you provide. And we'll reference. So that's, that's the background. I was dealing with, you know, Robin receiving information from you and all that stuff, so that's why I had that background. That's why I looked it up and found that in the, in the...
So, do we have the original variance that was granted?
Should be in your kit here.
Okay.
That's another decision.
And they require, they were for two different lots, right, so I'm just looking for the...
Yeah. Oh, there's two different things we have to determine. And we're not, we've got an attorney here that used to... So he'll probably be able to answer the question. I think the question came up about...
You can't run. You can't hide.
Yeah, he's wearing a tie, so he must be... The variance? Yes, you want to read that section about the condition of approval.
Okay.
Precedent to construction, your deeds for these two lots must be amended and recorded to show rights of way or easements to permit access over the other lot and to show the amended boundary line separating the lots. And I remember Ellie Alessio was the one who was really, you probably remember, it was really pressed on that one. It had to be a legal easement. And since we weren't attorneys and we didn't have one, we just assumed that these would show up on the deeds. But you've got a deed with the easement, and I guess the question...
It's a cross-easement, it's called.
Cross...
Cross-easement.
Yeah, cross-easement, so if a person was doing a title search, would it show up on either one of those two lots? Because, because that's what Ellie was making the real point about, was that it needs to, it needs to be something that future, when you sell either lot, that future people will know that that is an easement to get in to the, to the lot with the new house on it. So that, I guess the question was, did that cross-easement meet the requirement that the deeds of the two lots must be amended and recorded to show rights of way or easements to permit access over the other lot? And the amended boundary line? And I know that you had one easement for the, I mean, one deed for the boundary line adjustment. It was done by agreement between you and your selves. And then the, the sixth fee of either side of that was the easement. And that was recorded separately. So I, I guess the question here is, does that, if you're doing a search, does that meet the requirement for recording on the deed?
That's right here, the cross-easement deed.
But it's...
Oh.
You have the copy of the one that has the notes from...
Kerry Marshall?
Well, no, there are notes, you have the book and page number. The book and page number, yeah. So they're registered.
All right, so those...
And then there's the boundary. fiduciary deed? Oh, that's something else.
So, yeah, there's another one here. So there's lot 35 and...
Those are, those are the two deeds, but they don't show the easements or the boundary line adjustment. But the cross-easement deed is register, is, is...
It's registered.
It's a registered cross-easement deed.
Right.
The question is... Well, we, no, we have it, we've seen it. It's probably in here. Cross-easement deed, right here.
Okay.
And that is signed. And there's the book and page number on that.
All right, so that's...
And I'm going to hand this over to you and just see. Is that sufficient so that the person who gets, who buys the house, a house, will know that that easement exists? Because I can see, what was, and, and what reason why Ellie was adamant about that was that we were trying to protect future owners. And so when Joe Smith and Bob Jones own those two houses in, you know, in 2095, will they still have something on their deeds that recognizes that there's an easement that allows Bob Smith to get to...
So Kerry was at that meaning, and this is where she drew a...
That's good. That's all we need, because I think what will happen is that the title search gets done when a person buys a house, will have a reference to that cross-easement deed will show up on that. And the reality of it is, in that situation, if the title examiner at the time is not satisfied, but I think they will be, they're going to bounce it back and say, you guys have got to do another easement agreement with your neighbor. And it's as, you know, it's as simple as that.
Oh, at the closing.
In other words, to whatever standard they want, but that, to me, looks adequate.
Okay.
And, and so...
Then, at this point...
No charge.
Let them go through.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think you need to announce that the the condition...
Okay, that the...
Has been, the condition, because that was the only decision that had to condition on it.
All right, so there was a condition of approval that the two deeds for these lots must be amended... must be amended and recorded to show rights of way and easements to permit access across, access over the other lot and to show the amended boundary line separating those lots. And we do have recorded plans with book and page numbers for, for those deeds and for the easement.
Yes. So the condition has been met?
The condition has been met. So at this time, we'll let you go through why the garage has to be moved.
Sure. Of course, as being a tight state, we had to build the house before we built the garage. The pole is indicated, or it's right there, the iron pipe, the electric pole is right beside that iron pipe by my neighbor's garage. And the proposed garage, no matter where we put it, was going to be between that pole and the house. So it was decided we wanted to go underground. The previous garage, the electric service came down. There was, there was a, like a two by four propped up on the, on the edge of the garage to hold the electric line, to keep it above the roof lines. And it rotted away and they were, the wire was sitting on both the garage and the house. So anyway, didn't want it to go overhead, wanted to put it underground. My intent was to have it go as close to the property line as possible. And when they dug the line the first time, there was some miscommunication. My builder didn't know exactly where the garage was going to go, but he dug the trench right where the approved garage was. And then when the utility came out, they said, well, no, that's only two feet. You got to go down four feet. Just because he knew there was going to be further construction in that area. So they had to go down four feet. And then with that, we couldn't go any closer to my neighbor's garage because they didn't want to undermine whatever type of foundation that is. So we ended up being about nine feet off of their garage. So to put a garage there, I have to move it to the east to stay away from the underground utilities. And if I just moved it to the east, then I would be into my right of way. So I had to move it to the north to stay out of the right of way. So we're just making these moves because of the underground utilities and to maintain the right of way access between the two lots. And this, this new position actually moves it further away from 27, while the point. And.
And right on the edge of the easement. You kind of boxed in there. It's.
Yeah.
It looks like, looks to me like you had to go a little bit north with it in order to get it to fit between the utility line and the easement line.
And they put a new pole in, so they brought the pole in.
Oh, yeah, the pole has new guide wires.
They, they brought it in further towards us. So it was like, oh. And the guide, the guidelines came down. They went, they came out this way and down. They didn't even go with the pole. They actually came in, they put a new pole in and then they brought the guide wires this way towards us.
So, yeah, we had to avoid those as well.
Okay, so, so you're now 11 feet away from the.
From the other garage, which.
And, yeah, you're practically right on the bound, on the easement, but you're not on the easement.
Well, and that affects our walkway. You know, we need a walkway from the Jordan driveway. We're gonna have to make it permeable and movable. You know, it's not going to be a permanent walkway.
As far as probably.
It's gonna be, yeah.
He's stone.
Stone. Yeah. Yes, he's stone.
Okay, so I'm reading this, the, these variances. And that was variance for Article 301A and 3011D. But the, the way it was written is allow construction of the proposed garage on Lot 34 is shown on the plat drawn by Timothy Pelican dated March 1st, 2022. But does not allow the proposed dwelling. Okay, that was, came later. That was the August one. But so instead of giving you a variance of a certain number of feet, because you were close to that, we just gave you the variance to do it as shown on a plat. So, Megan, if it's okay with you, I would move, I would say that the new location meets the requirements of the variance, which were the setbacks and stuff, but needs to be modified. The variance needs to be modified to reference the plat, the document you've given us here, which is a plat, a plat drawn by.
Promise Land.
Same guy, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Pelican on July 27th, 2023, and amended, with the garage located amended on.
August 15th.
8/15.
Where's, oh, there it is. 8/15, 2023. Sorry, that would be the date that was drawn. But the new garage location is, that would be put in as a separate line with change.
Oh, yes.
And I would say that you need to have, I know that you didn't have time to get that drawn, but you needed an amended amendment line showing the new location. But that we can take this.
All right, so.
Go ahead.
All right, so.
It was starting to do a motion, but I don't think we're ready yet. I think you need to do a clarification.
So it meets the variance requirements.
Yeah, I think that's the first thing we need to vote on is, is.
Meets the original variance requirement.
That meets the requirements of the original variance so that we don't have to start from scratch.
With the new location of the garage being as shown as the latest plot plan, which will be dated. I mean, that's a problem. We don't, like, you can't specifically reference.
That'll be a condition.
Modified today by today's date.
A condition of the variance approval of extension would be that it, it's not an extension, but it's a.
All right, so what happened on here?
Oh, you know what? You may, you probably got to need an extension.
Yeah, because it expires in June, I think.
Yeah, expires June 9th.
It's 2022, but it's 2024.
Yes, it says 2022 on the letter.
Yeah.
That's when, that's when it was originally granted.
Oh, 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 we got it.
It expires.
Yeah, it expires 2022. That's a mistake. I thought I produced a correct one.
It would expire two years from that date, so June 9th, 2024, correct?
Right.
June, yeah, or June 10th, because.
June 10th.
Because the day after the, expires the day after the meeting date.
Okay, so meets the requirements of the original variance. How are we going to reference a, what plot they have, what plot plan?
What's required of that they get a building permit? I think as long as they get the building permit.
Before the 9th, before the 10th?
Yeah, and they've already applied. Actually, they've already applied for the building permits. So we don't need to do an extension because.
Construction doesn't have to be completed by.
No, it doesn't have to be completed. You just have to have the application in to the planning board or to the building inspector. You've already put the application into the building inspector. So they've met, they don't need an extension.
We just need to.
As long as, as we decide that it meets the requirements of, it meets the, yeah, I mean, it meets the variance limitations or whatever. If compliance with the variance that was granted, we don't need to worry about extending it.
All right, so we're saying that the motion I'm writing down, it would be that it meets the requirements of the original variance with the new garage location being moved northeast as shown on.
As shown on the plan submitted at the hearing, oh, sorry, not the hearing, at the, at the meeting.
314.
Yeah, 2020.
With formal, formal plans to be drawn up and dated with change?
With formal plans to be amended.
On the condition that formal plans.
Were amended, the plot plan is amended and provided to the planning office, that building inspector. And that would be good because he'll be able to draw the, well, you already have, but the underground mines.
Right, add all those new details.
He can do it in his little.
All right. So is this the motion that it meets requirements of the original variance with new garage location being moved northeast as shown on plan submitted at ZBA meeting on 31424, on condition that the plot plan is amended and dated and provided to planning office and building inspector?
Yeah.
It's quite a motion.
That's quite a motion.
Am I making?
I'll make that motion.
You make a motion?
Yeah, as stated.
All right, I will second it. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Excellent.
So that was unanimous.
So you'll receive a newsletter decision with all of that information. And as stated, you will need to provide the new plan to the building office, the planning office and the building inspector.
When we apply or when we get the building permit?
You can, you can go in and since it's a condition of approval, you should, as soon as you get that plan done, give it to Robin and to.
Yes, you could apply for the building permit at the same time.
Yeah, you already did.
We've already applied.
You already applied, that was saying that they met that deadline.
Yes, we have. He refused it.
Oh, yes.
His denial was based on the fact that it changed.
Yes.
And we needed to come back here to make sure that it was still good to go. It's nice and good to go. So now he can approve it and we.
It should be a CC to pick it up. So.
Okay. Perfect. Is that all the information I need? Did I cover everything?
I think they, well, ask them.
Do you have any questions? Did I cover everything?
Yeah.
All right. All right.
But they did have, by being extended, they did get right, it always can be the first hearing or the first, you know, item on the agenda because the, that's what happens when it gets moved.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, it was.
All right, so then my next question, Peter, is there was more board business, but there's no new things after 10. So are we done? And we'll do this next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's right. New businesses.
Okay.
It is.
All right, so we are going to table our board business because it's not critical information because it was after 10 o'clock.
What was it? Out of curiosity, I can't remember.
It was talking about the zoning board of adjustment laws, right, and changes that we proposed at the last meeting? Where's my, where's my agenda?
Here we go.
Board business. We were going to talk about the bylaws and changes.
Newspaper circulation to the Carrickstown news closing. That really doesn't, that's town, a board to select them make that decision anyways, so that, you know, we can amend these things any, and we're probably going to have some more amendments coming up later. So that.
Some of the things that we had talked about at the last meeting, we wanted to vote on for board business at this meeting, and now I just can't remember where it was.
Yeah. Well, that's a good reason to not to bring it up.
Right, all right, so.
Because when Robin hears, Robin will remember what we talked about.
Do I have to officially adjourn?
Yeah, you just can declare the board.
Declare.
If there's no further, you know.